Right, I think I will call the room to order so that we can get this special session underway. A very timely special session on maritime law enforcement and confidence building. Just to introduce myself, my name is Nick Childs. I'm the Senior Fellow for Naval Forces and Maritime Security at the International Institute for Strategic Studies, and I'm very pleased to be the moderator for this timely and important session. A couple of housekeeping notes before I introduce our esteemed panel. First of all, these special sessions are like the plenary sessions on the record, and I invite all of those of you who are sitting around the hollowed square table, who are in front of microphone consoles, to insert your identity cards with the chip down into the right-hand side of the console so that, first of all, it identifies you around the room to your fellow participants, but it also is the enabling device similar to the plenary sessions for you to make interventions when we get to the question-and-answer session after the panelists have made their opening remarks. And, as I say, similar to the plenary sessions, if you wish to make an intervention, please press your speaker button. That won't make your microphone live at that point. It will, however, alert me to the fact that you wish to make an intervention. And when we come to that part of the proceedings and I identify you, I will make your microphone live, and then if you could identify yourself and any affiliation and then make your intervention, that would be great. As I say, this is an important and timely session on maritime law enforcement and confidence building because the complexities of maritime challenges, particularly perhaps in this part of the region, are increasingly involving coastguards to meet those challenges and to advance the ambition, amongst other things, of maintaining good order at sea. And increasingly, integration of national coastguard services with each other, as well as with other naval forces and maritime security agencies is clearly underway as part of this process. Maritime law enforcement agencies are playing an increasingly central geopolitical role in the Asia-Pacific region, but arguably, some of the confidence-building mechanisms between them are less developed than they are amongst other forces and for other interactions in the security field. So this special session, I hope and anticipate, will explore how maritime law enforcement agencies can better manage regular encounters at sea to reduce risks and, as I say, calm any choppy waters that may be out there. And I could hardly ask for a more distinguished and appropriate panel of commandants and chief of those very coastguard and maritime security agencies, and I think, if it's not an absolute first, but certainly an important precedent as far as the double I, double S is concerned in convening these agencies for this. I will introduce them in turn, and they will make some opening remarks, and then we will, as I say, go to the question-and-answer session. And I will introduce them and ask them to make their own interventions in the order in which they've appeared in the various apps and agenda items. So first off, to my immediate left, I'd like to turn to Admiral Linda Fagan, Commandant of the U.S. Coast Guard. She's held that position since June 2022 as the 27th Commandant of the United States Coast Guard. So without further ado, you've already heard too much from me as it is. Admiral, over to you.
Thank you, and welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us here this evening. And I would like to thank IISS for bringing a coastguard-focused panel to this important dialogue and forum. And as demonstrated during the many panels and discussions here today, we are all inexplorably linked to the sea. Nearly 90% of the global economy moves via maritime routes. We rely on the sea for vital sources of protein, energy, and other natural resources. The ocean does not divide us; rather, it is the thing that connects us. Our prosperity depends on the seas remaining peaceful, secure, inclusive, and governed by international law. Maritime governance is a nation-state's ability to police and maintain sovereign rights in their own waters, basic maritime law enforcement functions. These include responding to pollution, deterring the trafficking of illicit goods, managing commercial shipping, maintaining maritime domain awareness, building resilience to impacts of climate change. When a nation cannot perform these functions, it is vulnerable to malign activity that threatens security at sea and stability ashore: activities such as human and drug trafficking, cyber attacks, and illegal, unreported, and unregulated fishing. These activities drive instability, threaten the rules-based international order that has underpinned global security since the Second World War. Constabulary services, whether called the Coast Guard, Navy, or Fisheries Service, are the best solutions to ensure the rule of law is maintained and guarantee each country's sovereign rights. Maritime law enforcement is a distinct capability from warfighting. Maritime services must be backed by a strong judiciary to ensure accountability for malign activities and behaviors. This is important because law enforcement vessels of many nations will likely operate near each other. Generally, professional maritime services will work to prevent or resolve uncertainty in their actions at sea. For example, the Code for Unplanned Encounters at Sea guides the behavior of navies when they operate near each other at sea. A similar agreement could help avoid conflict between coastguard or maritime law enforcement vessels of any nations. Established international fora provide opportunities to build confidence, both bilaterally and multilaterally. The Arctic and North Pacific Coast Guard Forums are examples of the discussions that help build confidence in these regions. Bilateral, multilateral, minilateral agreements also help to establish norms and frameworks for interactions. The United States Coast Guard is proud of the 60 bilateral agreements we maintain worldwide. This includes 12 with Pacific Island countries. We meet partners where they are and help build their own capacity to exercise sovereignty in their waters. We do this through shipwright agreements, training team engagements, joint exercises. Our vision is for each nation to be able to govern its own waters with the appropriate tools of maritime law enforcement and resource management. We look forward to continued collaboration to ensure that the maritime commons remain free and open for the benefit of all. Thank you.
Many thanks, Admiral, and you underscored the multitude of tasking that there is out there, but also the fact that the maritime law enforcement agencies and forces have a very distinct set of skill sets and requirements that they need to undertake. But I think you have already reinforced the suggestions that are out there about perhaps requirements to look more at rules of the road for those agencies. So thank you for kicking us off. I will now turn immediately to my immediate right and Vice Admiral Dr. Ivanchia, who is Chief of the Maritime Security Agency of Indonesia and has held that role, I think, since September last year. Please, Admiral, we look forward to your remarks.
Thank you, Chair. Excellencies and distinguished ladies and gentlemen, very good evening for all of us. It's a great honor for me, as Chief of Indonesian Coast Guard, to deliver a speech at this forum. I would like to express my sincere gratitude to the government of Singapore for hosting this dialogue. It is a privilege to join this highly respected forum and gather here in this session with Admiral Fagan, Admiral Gavon, and Admiral Quang Dao. They are well-respected leaders and have a close partnership with us. In this session, as we discuss maritime law enforcement and confidence building, I would like to share on what the Coast Guard and maritime law enforcement agencies in ASEAN have done to enhance maritime security and safety cooperation under the ASEAN Coast Guard Forum, which we call ICF, ASEAN Coast Guard Forum. The main purpose of the ICF is to strengthening cooperation among coastguard in ASEAN, contributing to confidence building among countries in the region, and providing a platform for preventive maritime diplomacy with a further mission of forging trust, stability, and peace in the region and beyond. As archipelagic state, Indonesia facing some of the perennial challenges, including illegal fishing, transnational crime, territory violation, piracy, accident at sea, cybercrime, oil spill, disaster at sea, and invasion. IUU fishing still contributes to 70% of maritime issues in Indonesia. In terms of maritime law enforcement and confidence building, various factors such as an excessive reliance on law enforcement measure rather than preventative measures, the maritime dispute issues, and subtle external intervention that encourages rival countries to be more assertive in their interaction have made regional issues arise. Transmit the essence of the importance of collaboration and cooperation for common interest in a wider scope, both in head of ASEAN Coast Guard Agency Meeting, or HAGAM, and Coast Guard Forum in the region, ICF, and CGGS Coast Guard Global Summit, which is the Global Coast Guard Forum. To conclude my speech, I would say that by strengthening the rule-based order at sea and enhancing the confidence among the coastguard and maritime law enforcement agencies of ASEAN member states in forging trust, stability, and peace in the region and beyond, maritime security and safety in the region and beyond are in our hands. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Admiral, thank you very much for your remarks and for also pointing us to the ASEAN Coast Guard Forum and it as a vehicle for strengthening cooperation amongst members. And I wonder, we may explore whether there are lessons learned there and possibly models to follow in that respect. But without further ado, I will now turn to my left again and to Admiral Ronnie Hill Gavan, Commandant of the Philippine Coast Guard, and we look forward to hearing your perspective on the challenges. Admiral, over to you.
Admiral Fagan, Admiral Ivanchia, my good friend, Major General Lee Quang Dao, Dr. Childs, your excellencies, good afternoon. I thank the double I, double S, and the government of Singapore for the honor and privilege to be here with the world's most brilliant minds today. In constant search for fitting solutions to eternally evolving existential issues in one of the world's most fluid, uncertain, complex, ambiguous, and increasingly becoming more operationally volatile maritime domains in our region, I can only be optimistic to find the best one here and thus be most grateful for this rare opportunity that the convener has given the Philippine Coast Guard. This can't be more timely than at this point, where amidst a pervading geopolitical noise, a country's steward of rules and peace finally finds its way before a most worthy collective in a place synonymous to where rules found peace, the Siang Villa. Last night, our country's most esteemed leader, our beloved president, His Excellency Ferdinand Ramaldis Marcus Jr., laid down in the most eloquent and comprehensive way our founding values, our psyche, and our enduring aspirations as a law-abiding and peace-loving maritime and peace and archipelagic country and people. He was unequivocal. He spoke in most certain terms about how we value the unity and integrity of our territory, our sovereignty, and jurisdiction based on international law, including UNCLAS and arbitral award, and the treaties, international conventions, and the universal norms shaped in time that brought about the Philippine society as what we are today. Very clearly so, he also underscored how we value peace based on law, mutual respect and dignity, and the ASEAN centrality as a way of life, not as mere convenience entities on the receiving end, but how we, including our forebears, our statesmen, exist not just as bystanders, but as responsible people who work and continue to work even harder to help shape the corresponding enabling conditions for it to thrive, from our colonial past up to this age where our resilience has become most challenged than ever. He has laid down the premise and the way for us, what we, the functions of him as our Commander-in-Chief and as our President and Chief Architect of Foreign Policy, must do, and thus we do. The Philippine Coast Guard has since become a common sight for what then has become our most popular frontier, the West Philippine Sea and the South China Sea. For at least three things. First, to enforce a safe, stable, prosperous, and peaceful rules-based order based on UNCLAS, international maritime conventions and treaties to which we are a signatory, and our national laws. Second, as the coastal state, to fortify our administration over our areas defined by laws, including UNCLAS and the arbitral award. And third, to pursue and nurture international cooperation engagement, most significantly with our lone treaty ally, the United States, our partners and friends, and most notably with our ASEAN brothers, obviously, in the spirit of ASEAN centrality. And for this, the Philippine Coast Guard recognizes the fundamental requisite, that for it to enforce maritime laws, it must see to it that for most, it follows the rules at sea, that if it needs to come to court, it should come with its hands clean. Thus today, the Philippine Coast Guard finds more real strength in following what several fora have since found to be among the most legally compliant and humane rules on the use of force, that it has remained true to the SOLAS Convention, to COLREGs, to MARPOL, and other conventions in its undertakings, that it finds SULASE as among the key drivers of the ASEAN Coast Guard Forum, and will host it four days from now, through which we hope to craft the Coast Guard-centric Protocol on Engagement at Sea, to govern each Coast Guard actions in our common waters. That despite the irony of a name, the Philippine Coast Guard remains steadfastly professional, calm, but resolute, to maintain that its fitted water cannons, or as more appropriately called, the fire monitors, are not meant to light up fire. They are there to save lives and properties from fire, or simply to put a fire, never to hose down the weaker ones to pieces to start a fire. This is how we exist and intend to leave our role for our country and the rest of the global users of the West Philippine Sea and the South China Sea. I hope others do, too, because if we embrace together what is right, we won't be wrong. With those stressors against mutual trust, we will simply find that the safe, stable, prosperous, and peaceful West Philippine Sea or South China Sea we all aspire for would no longer be a constant objective for us to labor hard to achieve, but simply, again, just a normal way of life. We just have to go back to the basics of humanity. We can, naturally. Thank you very much, everyone.
Admiral, thank you very much for your comments and perhaps highlighting, not surprisingly, perhaps, that coastguards have never had more visibility, in a way, because, to a large extent, they are coming on to the front line of those challenges that are being presented more often day-to-day in terms of how things are unfolding at sea. With that, I'll turn to my right again and our final panelist, last but certainly no means least, Major General Lee Quang Dao, the commander of the Vietnamese Coast Guard. He has been such since October 2021. The general will be speaking in his own language with translation, so if those of you who require that, want to stand by and get ready, I will pass the floor, the microphone, to Major General Lee Quang Dao. Thank you very much.
Have you read it and listened to the interpretation already so that I can go along? Good evening, everyone, and esteemed colleagues. Firstly, let's be on behalf of the government and Vietnamese people, as well as our Vietnam Coast Guard, to express our greetings and wishes to all the distinguished delegates and friends, and my wish you and family good health, happiness, and success. Thank you very much. Esteemed Chairman of this session, esteemed delegates and colleagues, according to the agenda on behalf of the Vietnam Coast Guard, I would like to discuss some issues regarding maritime law enforcement and the importance of building trust among parties nowadays in maritime security cooperation. Ladies and gentlemen, the sea and ocean play a vital role in economics, politics, society, defense, and security for not only coastal countries but also other nations worldwide. However, the current situation of maritime security, order, safety, as well as environmental issues, and marine economic development have been facing both traditional and non-traditional security challenges, including climate change, natural disasters, environmental pollution, transnational crime, organized crime, drug trafficking, human trafficking, piracy, terrorism, et cetera. The above-mentioned challenges are global in nature, impacting numerous countries and cannot be resolved by any single country, region, organization, or force, but they require joint efforts from international cooperation worldwide. In recent years, various countries and international organizations have undertaken extensive collaborative endeavors, proposed more initiatives, and established bilateral and multilateral cooperative frameworks in according to address maritime security challenges thereby upholding the ocean's values for humanity. Among them, international cooperation mechanisms include the Regional Cooperation Agreement on Combating Piracy and Armed Robbery Against Ships in Asia, or RICAP, the House of Asian Coast Guard Agencies Meeting, HACAM, the Global Coast Guard Summit, the Maritime Law Enforcement Dialogue, and the Information Fusion Center of Singapore Navy, IFC. These international cooperation mechanisms on maritime security have brought about significant results, and numerous maritime incidents and disputes have been effectively resolved. Many accidents at sea have been promptly addressed, and the activities of organized crime, transnational crime, and drug trafficking have been effectively countered, and therefore their security situation at sea has become more stable, thereby facilitating the marine economic development of countries. And in the process of implementing the international cooperation activities, the parties have complied with and respected the law, international agreements. A pivotal determinant of success of this cooperation is building trust among parties, achieving consensus, ensuring mutual reliability, sharing responsibilities, and contributing resources to effectively address maritime challenges, maintaining a sea of peace, friendship, stability, and development. Vietnam Coast Guard is a specialized force under the state management as the core of law enforcement entity protecting national security, order, and safety at sea, recognizing the strategic position and significance of the sea and oceans, as well as challenges posed to maritime security. In recent years, Vietnam Coast Guard has actively and proactively maintained and strictly implement Vietnam's laws as well as international laws and treaties pertaining to the sea, of which Vietnam is a member, and one of the key solutions that Vietnam Coast Guard is undertaking is international cooperation based on trust-building. As a result, up to now, Vietnam Coast Guard has signed bilateral cooperation agreements with eight countries and has participated in most multilateral mechanisms for maritime law enforcement, as I mentioned earlier in my speech. Vietnam Coast Guard also consistently demonstrates active and responsible members by continuously proposing initiatives to deepen and enhance the effectiveness of cooperation. And especially in 2022, Vietnam Coast Guard initiated the first Friendship Exchange Program named Vietnam Coast Guard and Friends in Hanoi, with a theme for secure, safe, and clean seas, which have the participation of maritime law enforcement agencies from such neighboring countries and international organizations in Hanoi, Vietnam. The program conveyed the message of the Vietnamese government, people, and law enforcement of Vietnam for a sea of peace, cooperation, prosperity, and development. Vietnam Coast Guard always press, together with the other coastguards, to join hand in addressing the complex traditional and non-traditional security challenges, and therefore, in 2024, we will organize the second Friendship Exchange Program, the Vietnam Coast Guard and Friends in Hanoi, and we will invite Coast Guard from countries and organizations to this program. It can be confirmed that the outcomes of the Vietnam Coast Guard's international cooperation have contributed to the building of stable cooperative and developed and clean and developed and clean waters. This is a clear evidence to affirm the importance of building trust and respecting international law in international cooperation. In the time to come, it is forecasted that the challenges of the sea will continue to escalate and become more complicated thereby imposing new and higher requirements for international cooperation in maritime law enforcement. And therefore, Vietnam Coast Guard propose the following. First, continue to strengthen cooperation on the basis of compliance with international and clause 1982, respect for national laws of other countries in order to more effectively and practically implement the signed agreements and treaties. Second, promote the signing of new more cooperation mechanisms and to launch more effective initiatives aimed at resolving and addressing maritime security challenges. Third, besides need to build, enhance the confident buildings and implement the scientific operation as well as formulating new initiatives and agreements. Vietnam Coast Guard commits to continue to be an active, responsible member and try to help other coastguards to maintain and enforce maritime laws contribute to the building of stable, peace, cooperative and developed waters. Thank you very much.
General, thank you very much for that. And in particular, perhaps for your own agenda for a way forward as far as some of the issues are concerned. And there have clearly been some common themes in the presentations on the transnational nature of a lot of the problems that have been faced, but also some clearly different perspectives depending on where the different speakers are coming from. We now come to the question and answer session. So as I say, I'm inviting those from the floor to make their representations. I can see quite a few names already appearing on the screen. Just to underscore, because I think there are some at the moment still nameless name boards, but for those who wish to make an intervention, then do insert your identity card chip down into the console and press the button if you want to speak. Your console will go green. When I call on you and the microphone goes live, it will go red and you can make your interventions. But we have quite a selection of interventions already. And I'll probably take three in a row, see how we go. First of all, I think I will actually recognize from Japan, Vice Commandant Yoshiu Saguchi of the Japanese Coast Guard. Sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is, I'm from the Japan Coast Guard. Welcoming the question. May I ask a question? Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I'm very honored to be invited to this conference. So that my colleague sitting next to me will translate or interpret my comment.
The world is connected by oceans and maintenance of maritime order based on the rule of law is indispensable for the peace and prosperity of respective regions and the world. The role of a coastguard agency is to conduct law enforcement in accordance with international law. A coastguard agency is justice by law and not justice by force. Naturally, law enforcement activities by a coastguard agencies must be in accordance with international law. The key point in law enforcement activity is the police concept of principle of proportionality and the strict criteria of necessity versus proportionality must be applied regarding the exercise of force. The exercise of force by a coastguard agency is to prevent or mitigate illegal activities and must never be to harm or damage property. As long as law enforcement activity is in accordance with international laws and executed under the principle of proportionality, even if two law enforcement ships were come head to head, it is unlikely that the situation will escalate into conflict. We need to understand international laws accurately and practice it. One must not abuse international laws to violate the rights of other nations. And coastguard agency ships must not be used as tools to change the status quo. Building confidence in coastguard agencies is an indispensable foundation to ensure that the rule of law functions properly. For confidence building, in addition to nations disclosing information about its own coastguard agency, it's important to have continuous exchange through various meetings, conferences, interactions, so that the coastguard agencies themselves can enhance their communication with their foreign counterparts. Thank you very much for this opportunity, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Vice Commander, for that. I think sort of comment and statement of a position. I'll now move on to Han Wen Ge, or Ji, forgive the pronunciation, from China.
Yes, not Ji, it's just Ag. Yes, 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 okay. Thank you for this occasion. And I have some, make some markets on the Admiral Gavon. And even, I still remember that just two or three years ago, the cooperations between the Philippines and China in many fields has brought fruitful benefits to both peoples. So the dramatically changes of the Philippine government's policy, all due respect, has not only threatened the relation of two countries, but also, I believe, dramatically raised the tension in this region. So it's better for us to sit down and negotiate under the framework of United Nations Convention of Law of the Sea and in steering of the unilaterally sending military or semi-military personnel to intrude into the仁爱礁,仁爱 Islands, I mean. So this is why we are here. We are here for talking with each other, all the partners, all the friends, directly, frankly and constructively. Because according to Socrates, the philosopher of ancient Greek, the first bit of wisdom is to talk. Thank you. I have no question. Thank you.
Thank you also for that comment. Next on my list, Andreas Aditya Salim from Indonesia.
Thank you for the opportunity, Chair. Coming from the academic background, I have been like observing recent developments in the South China Sea particularly, from prospectively to government of China asserting control of the laying of the submarine cables. And there's a new regulation, if I'm not mistaken, covered by major media about the new law where the China Coast Guard can arrest. But I haven't read incomprehensibly the document. So my question would be first addressed to Admiral Gavin, Irvin, Sha and Dao. What is your strategic vision for the ASEAN Coast Guard Forum? And then subsequently related to that is what can the big powers, China and the US, contribute to realize that vision of ASEAN Coast Guard Forum? My second question is specifically addressed to Admiral Linda Fagan. I'm a big fan of yours. This is the second day discussing about security, the world and everything and everything. I just have a thought about, and I would love to hear your comments on your strategic views on the Arctic and the Antarctic, given the numerous dynamics that the world has at the moment. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that. We'll take one more question or intervention in this round from Kumar Ramakshrina from Singapore.
Yes, thank you, Chair. A specific question for Admiral Gavin from the Philippines. As we know, in recent years, armed forces of the Philippines have been very successful in neutralizing the threat from terrorist groups in southern Philippines, particularly Abu Sayyaf Group. And there have been a number of surrenders in recent years. So I was wondering if you could share your assessment of whether or not these surrenders have had an impact on maritime terrorism? Because Abu Sayyaf Group for many years, as we know, has been involved in kidnapping for ransom operations in the seas around the southern Philippines. Has there been an impact on the rate of these kidnapped for ransom operations from a maritime terrorism perspective? Thank you.
Thanks very much for that. I think what I'll do is I'll invite the speakers, the panelists, probably in line order, to respond to the interventions we've had so far as they see fit. Some have been specifically directed to them, but there have also been a couple of statements or comments that they may wish to respond.
It's not alone on this. We work as one government. I cannot comment as a coastguard, but reassured, I will bring back with me that information for further consultations. Thank you very much for that. For Mr. Nguyen or Dr. Nguyen, I think you asked me about my vision. Who, or Andre?
Andreas.
Andreas, sorry. Asked about my vision for the ASEAN Coast Guard Forum. Very briefly, I wish to see ASEAN Coast Guard Forum as the platform to create a common norm amongst coastguards in ASEAN within the framework of UN clause. A framework for coastguards to go back to the basic. And the third is the impact of the surrenders of the Abu Sayyaf Group to maritime terrorism, if I got it right. Yes, there is a positive impact. No pirates, no piracy. That's simple. They surrendered, so there are no more pirates at sea. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And before I address specifically Arctic and Antarctica from a strategic view, certainly, all of the speakers highlighted the partnership, the collaboration, the not just necessity, but the work that we are doing collectively as coastguards that is ongoing now. And those bilateral and multilateral forums, we've just heard about ASEAN Coast Guard, North Pacific Coast Guard Forum, Arctic Coast Guard Forums, these all create the kind of space and opportunity to come together and share views, exchange ideas and in many cases result in actual on-the-water joint patrols with ships and officer exchanges from multiple coastguards. And it speaks to just the strength and the value of partnerships. So specifically to the Arctic and Antarctica. The United States, in addition to being a Pacific nation and certainly the United States Coast Guard has operated in the Pacific for over 150 years, we are an Arctic nation as well and have extensive exclusive economic zone that extends into the Arctic. And the Coast Guard operates the nation's icebreakers and we are in the process of building several new polar security cutters to increase capability and presence in the Arctic and also Antarctica. I was recently at the Arctic Coast Guard Forum and all of the Arctic nations came together to talk through, you know, challenges, opportunities collectively around the Arctic. And the themes that have come out here, themes around rule of law, sovereignty, creating opportunity permeates all of the forums, wherever they're focused around the world. And with regard to Antarctica, we're also a signatory to the Antarctic Treaty and remain committed to, you know, free Antarctica, an Arctic that, you know, supports science and other work that is not militarized and, you know, continue to work alongside the other Antarctic signatories within that regard. Thank you.
Many thanks, Admiral. Turn now to Admiral Irvin.
Okay, I will add the answer from Admiral Gavin for Andreas. The initiative of ASEAN Coast Guard Forum, it starts from our perspective that to maintain security and safety at sea cannot be done by one country. We should do it with our neighbors, especially our neighbors in the region. That's why we make this ASEAN Coast Guard Forum done. And then the next step, we want to be in ASEAN Coast Guard to be like family. We can make a cooperation, collaboration to enhance our capability, confident building, so we can keep the security and safety in the region together. That's why we already have a meeting. That's why we already have a meeting, every year, already three times, three years, ASEAN Coast Guard Forum. And then next step, we will have a training together, joint exercise, and then hopefully, next time, we can become a part of ASEAN's agenda, ASEAN Secretariat Agenda, so that ASEAN Coast Guard Forum will become more influence the security in the region. Thank you.
Many thanks. And finally, General, would you like to make some responses to the interventions we've had?
About the view of Vietnam, it's entrenched, and we are very consistent, that we are consistent to safeguard our sovereign rights and sovereignty of Vietnam. And we would like, together with other countries and the maritime law enforcement forces, to maintain safeguard, peace, stability, and cooperation at sea. About resolving differences or incidents at sea through dialogues by peaceful means based on respecting international laws, including the UNCLAS 1982, as well as the domestic laws of respective countries, including Vietnam's. While the fighting against crimes at sea, currently Vietnam has cooperative agreements with neighboring countries. And this time, we are implementing the activities in order to ensure the safety and security at sea as well as the environment at sea. So Vietnam Coast Guard also propose that in the time to come, facing with the non-traditional security challenges, the maritime law enforcement of countries will work together to organize a training, as well as exercise at sea, and rescue our fishermen at sea, and rescue the property of our respective countries, so that we will mutually support each other in order to ensure the safety of our citizens at sea when they do business at sea. Thank you.
We have quite a few other interventions waiting around the table, but I would like to use the privilege of the moderator's chair to pose a couple of questions that I'd like perhaps to ask all the panel to reflect on, because they sort of come to me as we've been listening to the discussions. And one of which is, the term Coast Guards, Maritime Safety Agency, but Coast Guards, is a very generic term, but it means different things. There are different legal foundations and therefore rules and responsibilities in different countries. How much of that is a challenge in and of itself in terms of cooperation, learning to work together, or is that being addressed? Or is it more an issue of the policy of how you use Coast Guards? And just thinking more generally about the congested, crowded nature of the maritime arena and the challenges being faced, certainly for naval forces, but I wonder if it's the same for Coast Guard forces, the question of the need of presence, what in the UK one would term the kind of maritime equivalent of the Bobby on the beat, Bobby on the beat, the policeman on the beat, to deal with all of these challenges in what are vast areas of responsibility? How much of that is a challenge? How much is there a resource challenge around having that presence and being where you need to be to do what you need to do? And is cooperation part of that? So a couple of thoughts for the panelists to think of from me to maybe respond to or discard if you feel the need. Let's move in terms of around the table to Atsushi Okudera from Japan.
Thank you so much. My name is Atsushi Okudera from Japan, Asahi Newspapers. I'd like to talk about the rising tension in South China Sea, particularly Spratly Island and the Scarborough Shoal. As we all know, as we all seen, you know, the Chinese Coast Guard has been using the water cannon, and each boat has been crashing each other. And the Philippines, of course, is now claiming, it is actually the act of escalation of the tension, and also, it's a danger of life or something like that. But at the same time, on the contrary, China is also claiming it is the Philippines that is raising the tension, but still, both the positions are totally different. So my question is, you know, as a professional for the Coast Guard, you know, particularly Admiral Fagan and Admiral Gavin, is it using a water cannon on this occasion in this region is a proper manner as a professional, when you think about the professional manner? And one more thing is the Scarborough Shoal, you know, as we all know, China has been doing reglaming in South China Spratly Island, the seventh shoal on the Spratly Island. But at the same time now, China is now controlling Scarborough Shoal. But if China is doing the same things in Scarborough Shoal, is it, how, what is your assessment? If China do that, is it a red line for the international community? How the international committee should respond, these kind of things? Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. I'll turn next to Dewi Fortuna Anwar from Indonesia.
Thank you, Chair. Firstly, I would like to know the progress of Q for Coast Guard in the South China Sea, to what extent it is, you know, what's the status at the moment? Any one of you could answer that. Secondly, I really welcome Indonesian initiative on the ASEAN Coast Guard Forum. But I'd like to ask my question to Pak Irvin Shah, given the fact that Bakamla is not really yet a full-fledged Coast Guard. What kind of obstacles that Indonesia faces when, you know, it tries to develop this more ASEAN forum? And thirdly, you talk about the possibility of having joint training and joint exercises together. Is it possible also to have joint patrol or coordinated patrol at very least, if not for all of the ASEAN countries, but at least for the coastal ASEAN states facing, you know, with shores on the South China Sea? Given the fact that Coast Guards is now the actor of the moment, you know, we are talking less about naval threats, but Coast Guards are not just involved in non-traditional security challenges, but more, you know, the gray areas, like what's happening in the Philippines. So what extent is it that the multilaterals between Coast Guards of the ASEAN states also go beyond simply joint training and exercises? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll turn now to Bonnie Lynn from the US.
Hi, thank you, Bonnie Lynn CSIS. My question is directed to Admiral Fagan, but probably also applies to the other distinguished speakers too. Ma'am, when you were talking about the responsibilities of the US Coast Guard, you outlined the differences between the Coast Guard responsibilities and the operations responsibilities for the US Navy. So my question to you is, as you look at the Chinese Coast Guard, has it become, has been more active throughout the region? Given our discussion today, do you see the Chinese Coast Guard operating as a typical Coast Guard? Or in what ways do you see the Chinese Coast Guard operating beyond that and perhaps more similar to an actual military force? Because I think one aspect of the Chinese Coast Guard is different from ours is, even during peacetime, the Chinese Coast Guard, since it takes orders from the Chinese Central Military Commission, could engage in operations to support its, or what its military leaders might want. So I wanted to get your assessment of how do you view the distinction between what are typical Coast Guard activities and what are activities beyond what normal Coast Guards engage in? Thank you.
Thanks very much. I think we'll return to the panel now. And I think I'll turn to Admiral Irvin Shah first, because you had perhaps the most detailed, specific set of questions for you. And then we'll get responses from the other panelists.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to answer the Mrs. Dewi Fortuna Anwar. For ASEAN Coast Guard Forum, especially Indonesia Coast Guard, this is already stated by our President Jokowi. And the first time as a president, his intention, Indonesia become Indonesia as a maritime forum over the world. And then he said Bakamla is the embryo, the embryo of Coast Guard of Indonesia. And after that, so many government rules, the stated of Bakamla is Coast Guard, have a function of Coast Guard. And until now, every forum, from Global Summit, Komudahagam, and also ASEAN Coast Guard Forum, and today, we are here as a Coast Guard of Indonesia. Idea of a joint patrol, actually, we already done with now, with Malaysia. We have a joint patrol called Optima Malindo, Malaysia and Indonesia. Maybe next, in the future, we can make a joint patrol with our neighbors countries, maybe with Singapore, ASEAN. This is possible, possible. But the first of all, we want to unite together, our ASEAN Coast Guard, become our brother country, brother Coast Guard, to maintain the security and safety at the region. So and in a step, maybe, who knows? But I want to, my personal perspective, we want to solve the problem, solve the security, solve the safety at the region by ASEAN way, by ASEAN country. So this, I already visit maybe four countries, visit the Coast Guard to talk face-to-face with Admiral Gavin also. We want to maintain the security together. We have example, a role model, how the ASEAN collaboration, for example, Indonesia with Malaysia. We have, what, next, last year, we did the hot pursuit. A ship across to Malaysian waters. Because we are the same from ASEAN Coast Guard Forum, and we have a relation very close, I can ask the help to support us only by phone, only by phone. So very quickly, Malaysia respond my call, our call, and then they send personnel from IPMM to get the ship and hand over to Indonesian Coast Guard. That's a good example. Comodian, and then in my perspective, to maintain security and safety in the special, especially in the South China Sea, we better did it with, do that with the Coast Guard. Because with Coast Guard, I think the tension is still low, not by military. I think that's why I'm very enthusiastic, enthusiastic to bring our Coast Guard, ASEAN Coast Guard, together to maintain security. That's why we can maintain the security by civilian, not military. The tension still low. That's why I ask Admiral Gavin, and this year, next month, I will hand over the Chairman of ASEAN Coast Guard Forum to him. Please applause to him. Next ASEAN Coast Guard Forum. So we already talked to have a next exercise, and we'll ask the Coast Guard from all over the world to join next year's Indonesia Naval Exercise in, we call it the Komodo Exercise in Bali next year. And in this time, Coast Guard all over the world will be invited to join the exercise and will be coordinated by Indonesian Coast Guard or Bakamla. Thank you.
Thanks, Admiral. As you talked about handing over the baton, I'll hand the baton for the panel over to Admiral Gavin now, if he would like to make any further comments.
On the ASEAN Coast Guard Forum?
On ASEAN Coast Guard Forum, on South China Sea, on...
Joint patrol.
Joint patrols, yeah.
And the use of water cannons against fellow Coast Guards, well, obviously, it doesn't look good. And there is disproportionality in the use of force, vis a vis the political message it sends. We're not very comfortable with that. So I hope that stops. On the, on the prospect of joint patrols in the ambit of the ASEAN Coast Guard Forum, yes, that is a possibility, but innovations has to be made, because Coast Guard patrol are reinforcement patrols, and complications can exist when a foreign country's Coast Guard patrols in the other country's territorial state. But innovations can be made along the way. We just have to be very creative. For as long as the political leaders agree, I think things can be done. I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, I'll go to Admiral Fagan now. You had two or three questions that I think were relevant to you, but particularly this question of, amongst other things, the Coast Guard kind of naval integration issues.
So I will actually start with the reflection you posed at the beginning of this round of questions, because it does tie them directly to the specific question with regard to Coast Guard role, Navy, Navy role. And, you know, you question, is it difficult or challenging as Coast Guards are not all, do not share the same portfolios? And reflect on the set of authorities and capabilities that sit resident with the United States Coast Guard. And I have traveled extensively and engaged extensively with not just Coast Guards, but Navies in many cases. And we have, we're unique in the breadth of that authority. I like to describe the US Coast Guard as a maritime constabulary force, who at all times is also a military force, a law enforcement agency, and a regulatory agency. And it brings incredible flexibility, particularly to some of these maritime governance problem sets that we are discussing. And for me, everything from search and rescue to aids to navigate... And for me, everything from search and rescue to aids to navigation, mitigating cyber attacks in the marine transportation system, countering illegal fishing, responding to oil spills, countering illegal migration, counter narcotics, this is all work within the Coast Guard portfolio. But not all of the Coast Guards that we interact with have that same breadth of portfolio. What the Coast Guards do share is a commitment to a rule of law, respectful of sovereignty, and conducting operations as professional maritime entities, again, custom, consistent with customary law, international order. With regard to the question, you know, the difference between a Coast Guard and Navy, and I would also tell you that there are many Navies in the world that have significant portfolios that fall into the maritime governance, protection of sovereignty, protecting natural resources, and so, I have chosen not to define, to put a dark line between a Coast Guard and Navy, because they're in the continuum, starting with just safety and well-being of citizens on the water, through national security, maritime security, and then into defense, Coast Guards operate in that role, and, you know, during World War II, the United States Coast Guard was operating in the Department of Defense under, under the Navy. But there's a continuum, and it's just that it's gray depending on the set of issues. So, to some of the other comments around, you know, the Spratly Islands, Scarborough Shoals, I would just emphasize what professional Coast Guards have in common, and professional Coast Guards operate with principles of restraint, principles of proportionality, with clear, unambiguous rules of engagement around use of force, and have command and control over those assets in a way that remains, again, consistent with the rules-based order and the international descriptions around that, and Uncloas has been referenced several, several times here this evening. To the question with regard to unexpected encounters at sea, agreement regarding Coast Guards, five or so years ago, there was an active discussion ongoing. I am, I am not aware of that currently occurring, but it does, it is an area where many of the Navies in the region have those, have those agreements in place, and Coast Guards do not. And so, any way that we all collectively work to mitigate, eliminate risks around miscalculation in these agreements, it's certainly what Uncloas helps do, is it, you know, the Colreg's flow from it, Solis, all these create understanding and a commonality around, when we say rules-based order, what that, what that means, and how they are applied in actual operations at sea. Thank you.
Admiral, thanks very much. I turn to General Lee, whether he has any reflections on the, on the current, current set of, set of questions that are, that are out there, including the ones I posed perhaps at the, at the beginning, but it's not obligatory if you, if you prefer not to respond. No?
No.
No, okay. Okay. Thank you very much. What I will do is actually now turn to, from, an intervention from the floor, from Vietnam, from Han Nguyen.
Hang on a second. Hang on. Nguyen from Australian National University. So, I have a question for the entire panel about what is your perspective about managing gray zone activities on South China Sea? Because it's the type of activities that pose a lot of legal and operational challenges, and can transform very quickly and make it hard to keep up with. And in your idea, what kind of cooperation activities would be prioritized for like managing gray zone activities? Thank you.
Sorry, forgive me. Did you direct that to any particular panelist?
This is for the entire panel.
Okay. Thank you very much. Right. Let's now go to Suya Hisashi from Japan.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I'm Hisashi from Japan, and working for the Japanese Public TV. My question goes to Admiral Gavan and Admiral Fagan. As U.S. Defense Secretary, Mr. Austin said today, dialogue must be very important to avoid armed conflict. Would you be willing to hold talks with Chinese counterpart, where the, to control and ease the tensions? And how do you think importance of role of Coast Guard, especially to avoid armed conflict, which is a non-military law enforcement agency? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, for us, an extra, extraregional perspective, Elizabeth Hauschelt from Germany.
Yes, thank you very much, from the D Company. Allow me to broaden the view on the Pacific with regard to the military cooperation or association, AUKUS, and it's threefold. One question to Admiral Gavan, if you, or if America is thinking of opening AUKUS also for Asian countries, is there a thinking of broadening, or will it stay with Australia, United States, and UK? And to the admirals from Indonesia and Philippines and Vietnam, whether you're interested in joining AUKUS? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. You might want to reflect on that. Rebecca Ratcliffe from UK.
Hi, Rebecca Ratcliffe from The Guardian. I had a question for Admiral Gavan. We heard about the importance of communication. It was reported last year that the hotline between the Philippine and China Coast Guard had been essentially suspended. I wondered, is there an active hotline, and how much direct communication do you have with China's Coast Guard now? I also wanted to ask about the geography of the South China Sea, and, you know, there are areas like Second Thomas Shoal or Scarborough Shoal that have been real flashpoints for a long time. Do you feel that new flashpoints are emerging now, such as Sabina Shoal?
Thanks very much. Celine Pajon from France. Oh, there we go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, it's working out now. Thank you very much, Celine Pajon from E3. I think several speakers so far have mentioned, and including President Marcos, I believe, have mentioned the similarities of the maritime challenges that are faced by both the ASEAN countries and the Pacific Island countries. And I think he mentioned also the necessity to, to develop the ties and cooperation between the two regions. So, in this perspective, what do you think the Coast Guard's role would be? And what would be the easiest step to develop the ties and cooperation between Southeast Asian countries and Pacific Island countries to tackle maritime security challenges? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just, just a sort of warning to the panel, I think, when we come back to the panel for responses to the various questions, which may, may well be, time, time is marching on, it may well be our, our last round of intervention, so perhaps think of some closing thoughts as well. I'll probably go in reverse order, so I'll start with, with General Lee to respond. But before I do that, particularly given that in the, in the previous interventions, there were some specific interventions posited on the role and behavior of, and, and position in, in the Chinese approach to maritime power, about the Chinese Coast Guard. I will return to our friend from China who spoke earlier, because he would like to make a further intervention. So, over to you, Han Nguyen.
Han Nguyen, Han Nguyen. Last, can thanks a lot, and give me another chance to reply some, some words, because it's just, as I observed just a moment, is our Japanese friend is more, much more eager than others to care about the water cannon issue. Because if I'm not wrong, Japan was the first one who used water cannon. The Japan, Japanese Coast Guard is the first one who used water cannon towards Chinese fishing boat and fishermen. And I had, maybe everyone, you can find hundreds of pictures in internet from the 1990s to 2010s, and this is, this was the Japanese Coast Guard's water cannon tactics. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much for that. Let's return to the, to the panel, and I'll start with General Lee, if you, particularly on this, the question of the gray zone was raised, which is an interesting concept, and how, you know, Coast Guards fit into the challenges around that. So, I just wonder if, if perhaps you could start with thoughts on that, and the other panelists as well. Just on AUKUS, I mean, obviously, you know, AUKUS, there is an issue around, particularly pillar two of AUKUS, and advanced technologies, about whether at some point there might be cooperation with, with countries beyond the, the three original partners. You know, advanced technology is no doubt something that's of interest to Coast Guards, but I don't know how much you've reflected on, on, on the AUKUS question, but, but I'd just like you to, particularly those three who were asked to consider whether they'd like to be part of the AUKUS adventure, whether they could respond on that particular point. But for now, General Lee, first you.
And Vietnam's view about, once again, we would like to reaffirm that all the claims and activities in the South China Sea must be in accordance with international laws, especially the Uncloas 1982. All the countries must respect the sovereignty, the sovereign right, and their jurisdiction rights as defined by international laws and Uncloas 1982. Not to have activities that may escalate the tension and situation, and to ensure their freedom of navigation and overflight, and to maintain peace, friendship, cooperation, and development of the seas.
What the question?
Well...
About AUKUS?
Well, there was the, the issue around, you know, gray zone, gray zone activities. Would you like, would you like to join AUKUS? Have you thought about that? Yeah, I think those were two, two, two issues.
Thank you. I just want to respond of the question, which is, is Indonesia will join AUKUS? I think this is beyond my, my decision, and also, this is our government decision and For me, especially as a Coast Guard, I just want to unite the Coast Guard in ASEAN together, so we can cooperation and collaboration to maintain the security. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Actually, I'll go to Admiral Gavan next.
Yeah, I think I have a list here. I hope I won't miss, miss one, but please remind me if I fail to answer your question. On the recent political development about pertaining to the encouragement for the countries involved to engage each other, the Coast Guard has always been an extension of politics. So, it depends on a decision of our political leaders. We are always prepared to do whatever actions they want us to do. We have done it before as a function of politics and policy. It is not in my pay slip, within my pay grade to decide whether or not I should reach out to my counterpart. But we should always be prepared, either way. We're open. On the question about direct communications with our Chinese counterpart, yes, in the past, we had, we had. But the Joint Coast Guard Committee MOU has lapsed, naturally, it was not renewed, so the direct line has been stopped as well. Do we see emerging flashpoints? I think it is beyond my pay grade to, to determine, but of course, you know better than us. Tell us if you find one. On the cooperation with ASEAN, as what our President has mentioned last night, cooperation amongst ASEAN Coast Guard has been vibrant of late. The ASEAN Coast Guard Forum has taken the, the necessary traction to move forward, and we are now on the road to becoming a mainstream forum in the ASEAN framework, to, not to be part of ANEX II, but to be part of ANEX I, and to become part of the agenda of the ASEAN Senior Ministers Meeting, or Senior Officers Meeting, and other related tracks. We are good in ASEAN, in developing or leveraging ASEAN centrality in the management of our relationship. We're getting there. The Philippine Coast Guard, I think along with other Coast Guards in ASEAN, have been engaging each other as well in other fora, like maritime law enforcement dialogue being bunkered by UNODC, the Southeast Asian Maritime Law Enforcement Initiative being funded by, I think, the United States through INL and the U.S. Coast Guard, and the humanitarian dialogue initiative, I think, which is partly supported as well by the, by China. So, there are different fora that bring together the Coast Guards in ASEAN. Cooperation has been vibrant so far. Thank you. Did I miss something? No? Thank you.
Yeah, no, I think you covered, covered the hotline issue amongst other things, but Admiral Fagan.
Certainly. And I'll, I will be brief. I think the Secretary of Defense said it so well this morning, right? Having avenues for talking and bringing issues to the table are so critical across all of our, our governments and political systems, and through the North Pacific Coast Guard Forum, those avenues are, are open between all of the Coast Guards who are, who are members. It is sort of broadly, we'll reflect on a number of, you know, there was military cooperation, it was brought up, the question on ASEAN, AUKUS. Really, for me, the opportunity is in how well we collaborate and partner with each other, and I would argue that it isn't, and the Coast Guards aren't coming to the forefront. The Coast Guards have been there all along, but their relevance to the maritime governance and the problem set in the region has never been greater. And so, focusing on how to create that shared opportunity, the partnership, doing it in ways that are respectful of each nation's sovereignty, helping to create capability and capacity, and marrying capability and capacity, a nation's fisheries enforcement officers with, with expertise and sovereignty in that... officers with, with expertise and sovereignty in that nation, with a ship like a Coast Guard cutter, to allow them to enforce their own sovereignty in their own exclusive economic zones. These are the challenges in front of Coast Guards, not just in this region, but around the world, and I could not be more thankful for the great partners that are here on the panel with us as we continue to share our aligned interest in solving some of the challenges here in this region. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the admirals on, on the panel. We are pretty much up against our, our time, and I very much appreciate your, your contributions. In, in the interest of open dialogue, and the fact that we have the vice commandant of the, of the Japanese Coast Guard, who I think would like to make a, I hope, a brief, brief response to, I assume a brief response to comments that were made earlier directly about, about Japanese Coast Guard tactics, if that is right, and if it, if it is brief, as I say, in the interest of discussion, if that is the case, please go ahead.
Hi. Hi. Yes, so you had been talking about the cues from Admiral Fagan, so that there was a question that was not expected.
As I mentioned earlier, in the case of law enforcement, the principle that we operate on is that of proportionality, and it's necessarily versus proportionality when we decide on what force to exercise. So I hope there's no misunderstanding, that whatever we do decide to do, it is in keeping with the situation that we face at that time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that, and thank you for being brief. As I say, in the interest of, of discussion, I, I thought I would allow that response. It's, it's been a really interesting discussion. We have, we have ranged across the horizon, I think, and as I say, I much appreciate both, both the panelists' engagement with the process, but also with, with those of you around the table who've, who've been very active and posed some, some interesting challenges and, and points. So it's been a valuable discussion. Thank you all. We are beyond time, but as, as we depart, please, in the traditional way, show your appreciation for, for our esteemed panelists. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yes. Yes. Thank you. Thank you. I need, I think you should...